Okay, everyone, welcome to our town council meeting. We'll call this meeting to order and rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, roll call. Kate?
Councilor Jill Kristensen.
Here.
Councilor Daniele. Councilor Gianoni.
Here.
Mayor Kozinski.
Here.
Councilor Luddy.
Here.
Councilor Pagliano.
Here.
Councilor Rosso.
Here.
Mayor, you have a quorum.
Thank you. Okay, we have our audience of citizens first up. If anyone wishes to address the council for any reason, now is your time. So, seeing none, I will close that part of the meeting and move on to our meeting agenda, which starts with our consent agenda. So if all our councilors have read the items and if there's any questions, if not, we can -- we'll put a motion on the floor.
Okay, I'll make a motion to accept these six items on the consent agenda tonight.
Second. Thank you. Any further discussion? Any questions? Hearing none, all is in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? So moved. All right, so where are we at here now? We are at our public hearing. So, okay. Yes, here we are. Okay, we have a public hearing tonight, which will be held tonight, July 10, 2018. Hereby convene the public hearing for the dump trucks appropriation and bond ordinance. The ordinance, which is the subject of this public hearing, is available to the public and may be obtained at this meeting from the town clerk. Is there a motion and a second to read the title of the following proposed ordinance and to waive the reading of the remainder of the ordinance incorporating its full text into the minutes of this meeting?
So moved.
So have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? Motion passes. It is an ordinance appropriating $600,000 for dump trucks 2018 and authorizing the issue of bond, lease, or other financing of the town to meet said appropriation and pending the issuance thereof, the making of temporary borrowings for such purpose. That's our public hearing. And it's a public hearing, so anybody from the public wishes to speak on this, now would be your time. Okay, hearing none. I will call the public hearing on the dump trucks bond ordinance closed. Thank you. Okay, so we will move on to new business.
Tonight is the ordinance for appropriating the $600,000 for the dump truck and also to move to waive Rule 7. I think we've talked about the wave of Rule 7 that allows you to have the hearing and to work on the ordinance, pass the ordinance tonight.
Right, and, you know, typically if it's a large item or something that we, you know, need some more time or we want to give the public more time to talk to us, we would not waive Rule 7. But in this instance, we certainly had the public hearing for the public and I don't think it's a controversial issue that we need more time if all the councilors agree when we make the motion. So we'll go ahead and take a motion to waive Rule 7.
I will make a motion to rule waive 7 for this agenda item.
Second.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? So moved. So now we will take a second motion on our ordinance.
Okay, I will move to adopt an ordinance appropriating $600,000 for the dump trucks in 2018 and authorizing the issue of bond, lease, or other financing of the town to meet said appropriation and pending the issuance thereof, the making of temporary borrowings for such a purpose.
Okay, thank you. We have a second on that?
Second.
Any council discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? So moved. I declare the ordinance adopted. Okay, thank you.
Agenda item number two is approval to purchase auto parts supplies from NAPA utilizing the state Connecticut Department of Administrative Services contract on an annual basis. The garage requests permission to -- for expenditures for a year. It includes several different vendors, NAPA, Advanced Auto, Fleet Pride, Taska, Monaco, and Rock Auto. What they do is they buy miscellaneous parts from these vendors. They're requesting these amounts of money, which above our usual $10,000 limit. The cumulative total, what they do is they try to get the best price from each one, then they purchase off of the -- from that vendor. Jim Simons is here to discuss what he does annually.
Okay, yeah, you want to come up for just a minute, Jim? And you know why you're coming up? I just want, you know, the dump truck ordinance, I just wanted to mention, you know, just so you folks know and for the public who are watching at home, now we know they're watching. You know, we needed three new dump trucks that are basically rusted completely through, right, from what I understand, the frames. So, you know, we have a deal that we worked to get all three this year, so our fleet will be in much better shape to take care of town repairs and take care of snow plowing in the winter. So I think it's a good deal for the town and obviously it's a safety issue for our employees, so we're glad that that's going, right, Jim?
I'm working hard on it right now, meeting with different vendors, working off of different contracts, both national contracts, federal contracts, and state contracts, to work on the best package for this.
Great, well, we appreciate your hard work.
We'll be back next meeting.
Oh, okay.
With a proposal, because we need to get that moving so we can purchase the trucks and get them here for winter.
Got it, okay. Good, we appreciate your hard work. We know, we know you always come back with a good product, so we appreciate it. Okay, so what do we got on this one?
So throughout the year, we spend a lot of money, we spend our budget, on auto parts for different vendors. And most parts are purchased collectively through the same vendors, NAPA, used to be Acme, now it's Advanced Auto, one of the Ford dealers, Rock Auto. But collectively over the year, it's going to be over the threshold of $10,000. So it's easier to come up here now and say, these are the people we're purchasing the parts from, these are the ones that have contracts, and this is how we do it. And how we do it is, there's usually two to three prices that are obtained by the mechanics on those parts that are needed, and then we look at the availability of that part, whether the part is OEM or non-OEM, and the cost, and then we purchase the best part for the job. So we're constantly looking at everything.
So what you're saying is if you need a part, you'll look at all of these and then pick the best priced one depending on OEM and all that?
Correct.
So what would happen if you needed more for Monaco Ford?
And we'll be back here.
And then we could rearrange it? Okay, very good, thank you.
Jim, has the parts changed from the dealers over the years? I mean, is availability a bigger question than it used to be?
Actually, the dealers, the Ford dealers, going through your bigger Ford dealers, which is Taska, Monaco, those Ford dealers, the parts are really available. They usually get them here within 24 hours. And also, they're very competitive priced now, so they know they're going up against the national wholesale places. And they're beating some of their prices, in fact.
And it's OEM, so...
Correct, so it is designed for that vehicle.
Yep.
That's a big, big thing, especially with the police cruisers.
Yeah. Okay, great, so we get that, we get, we want to have our parts available to fix our fleet. It's important. So if we haven't, don't have any other questions at the moment for Mr. Simons, we will go ahead and we have several motions on this item to go through.
Okay, I'll make a motion on the first one, to approve the purchase of auto parts and supplies using the above State of Connecticut DAS services contract, number 16 PSX 0030 from NAPA Auto Parts, for an amount not to exceed $30,000.
Second. Thank you. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all is in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? So moved. Second one?
Number two, move to approve the purchase of auto parts and supplies using the above U.S. Communities contract from Advanced Auto Parts, or Advanced Auto, for an amount not to exceed $30,000.
Second.
Thank you very much. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all is in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? Motion carries. Number three?
Okay, move to approve the purchase of auto parts and supplies using the State of Connecticut DAS services contract, 16 PSX 0030, from Fleet Pride, for an amount not to exceed $20,000.
Second. Thank you very much. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all is in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? Motion carries. Next?
Next, I will move to approve the purchase of auto parts and supplies using the above State of Connecticut DAS services contract, 16 PSX 0030, from Taska Ford, for an amount not to exceed $25,000.
Second. Thank you. Further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? So moved.
I will make a motion to approve purchase of auto parts and supplies from Monaco Ford for an amount not to exceed $25,000.
Second. Thank you. Further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? So moved.
And lastly, motion to approve the purchase of auto parts and supplies from Rock Auto for an amount not to exceed $25,000.
Second. Thank you. Any discussion? Hearing none, all is in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? So moved. Okay, great. Thank you.
Okay, agenda item number three is also for Jim. It's a request for approval of a purchase of a Jacobson 16-foot mower for, with a four-season protective cab. If you remember during the budget season, we had requested that, for the grounds department, that we replace their large mower. This particular one's been picked out and selected, and utilizing NJPA contract, we can get the cost at $102,538, which is within the amount of money we had budgeted. Jim is here to provide any details.
Anything else we need to know seems pretty...
I'll bring Mr. Wood up. Mr. Wood is my expert on that. He did the field testing of this piece of equipment.
Oh, let's hear about the testing.
Basically...
Get it up to speed down the road somewhere or what?
No, it does about 25 miles an hour. I don't think we need to go that fast.
Probably not.
That's not, that's not good enough, because I think I just saw one on the news that can go 150 miles an hour. Honda, like, why would you need that?
Exactly. We tested out Toro and Jacobson, were the two main manufacturers of the mowers. We currently have a 4000D Toro, and the problem and the biggest difference between the Jacobson and the Toro is, the Jacobson has individual hydraulic pumps that go to each blade. And if you go out to some of the baseball fields like Percival or Zippadelli or the high school, you'll notice there's a lot of clumps of grass. Or if your kids play soccer at McGee or at Willard, you'll notice it's very clumpy. The mower we currently have now is a Toro and has a belt system. So by having individual hydraulic pump motors to each blade, they're going to spin at 3,000 or 4,000 RPMs and disperse the grass evenly and give us a finer, even nicer cut.
Great.
So that's pretty much the biggest difference between the two, except Toro is over the allotted amount of money where Jacobson was not.
Yeah, well, that's good. I mean, I, you know, I noticed that, particularly that field at Willard always, I'm sure it's thick there because it's probably wet, right, but it's always clumping up, yeah. Doesn't look too nice and it's probably not too good for the kids to be running around there, right?
I'd just like to note what a good job your crew have done, particularly at Zippadelli and Percival. I had the occasion to be there more times than I should, and it's really a credit to your crew to, nice condition, and Jen, that the fields are, so thanks.
Thank you very much. I'll pass it on to the guys in the morning.
I had to chuckle with the four-season cover. I'm thinking, hmm, winter, we wouldn't be using the mower. It was kind of fun reading that.
But you see, the mowers will be out in November.
Oh, okay.
You never know.
That's true. It'd be March, right?
It could be rainy or foggy in the morning and you need that, you need air conditioning, the heat. Oh, Mike. Hello. So the four-season cover, everybody thinks about snow, but there's other seasons in which it's used and...
That's great.
It helps the employee, not only, it's safer for the employee, we don't have to worry about heat exhaustion and other things, but it keeps them out of the elements.
Yeah, that's great.
Okay, appreciate the information, guys. Appreciate your work as always, and so we'll take a motion on this?
I will move to approve the purchase of one Jacobson 16-inch mower with an enclosed four-seasons cab from MTE Turf Equipment Solutions, utilizing NJPA contract number 02062117JCS for a cost of $102,538.84.
Second. Thank you. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all is in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Jim.
Agenda item number four is approval for purchase of 100 fully upholstered chairs and arms from a state contract. This is for the senior center. Tina Doyle is here to discuss the acquisition of these chairs. Also, as you recall, this was on the, in the town budget that was recently passed. We're slowly replacing some of the furniture up at the senior center, so I think that she's been waiting patiently for these chairs.
Yes, you have, we know that, and we're glad we're finally going to get our seniors some nice chairs.
Yeah, so it's taken me a long process, but I'm glad that I took the time in researching and trying out four different chairs. I tried them with seniors to see what they were comfortable in. And as you could see on the agenda item, some are lower in price, but they were not, so like, for example, the BizChair.com, it was lower in price per chair, but was not durably made. The chair was going to have to be put together when we received it. The vinyl padding was known to rip when stacking the chairs, because I did reach out to my other counterparts in senior centers across the state, and I got that feedback on that chair. The other chairs were, we found to be, two of them we found to be too heavy to lift and move, and I had to, I have to think about my maintenance staff, because it's a constant change-up of setups. So, and also, a lot of them had a tilted back, they had lower or shortened armrests, and the seat was lower. The one I chose, I had gotten the information through the Board of Ed and that state contract, and that chair met all the requirements that we had set, which was a chair that had a straight back, full and higher armrests, higher seat, and it's vinyl and it's well-made. As you know, the last set of chairs lasted us, I think, 32 years.
Wow.
And I didn't want to buy a chair that was going to last us a few years and have to come back and ask for more money, so I wanted to find a chair that was going to last us and be durable and, and meet the requirements that the seniors need.
That's great, well, thanks for your research.
Tina, I just want to commend you, not only for finding a good product before the process that you did, and also for thinking about the senior's safety, because having a chair with a straight back and the higher arms, it's going to make it easier for them to get out of the chairs, so it's safer for them, less fall, so thank you for what you've done.
You're welcome.
Okay, then, you know, I'm glad the chairs will be forthcoming after we vote. And, you know, there was, I was over at the senior center, I guess a couple weeks ago, for the event there, and we talked about a couple other things, so I'll, we'll be talking to Jack and see what we could do with those items.
I appreciate that.
Yeah, so we'll see what we could do, if we could squeeze some extra, he doesn't know yet, but I'll make him squeeze some extra money out of the budget to...
And as I told you, Mark, that I always am looking for other avenues...
Yeah, yeah.
...to sponsor...
Right.
...programs or to fund different things, whether through grants or donations. As you see, half of this is coming out of the CIP money, and the other half is coming out of our Myrna Paulus Berlin Senior Center Fund, which she designated for furniture.
Okay, just so, there's a mystery for all of us, one of them is that, the part-time position, that I think got eliminated through the budget, but we talked about it. I know you're looking for some additional funding, but if you get some, we can hopefully, I told you, we would match whatever.
Well, I have some funds now.
You have some, and you were...
I'm looking, I am applying for another grant.
Right, that's right, you told me.
For trying to get funding for a part-time position at the senior center.
Yeah.
Because our numbers are going up.
Yeah.
And we are a staff of two.
Right, yeah, no, you need some assistance, so we'll, as you're working on that, we'll just, you know, keep in touch with Jack and...
And I'm also trying to find funding for our cabinets.
And that's the second item, was the cabinets...
The kitchen.
...at the senior center that have seen many, many, many better days.
Right, because we have to remember that we are a certified kitchen.
Right.
And we get inspected by the health inspector, and we could be marked down, and we could, if he wanted to, close us, and that would mean no lunches for five days. We serve five days a week.
Right.
And we serve, you know, approximately 30 people.
Right.
A hot lunch every day.
Okay.
So we don't want that to happen.
No, we won't, we will not let that happen.
Okay.
We will not let that happen.
Thank you.
So we'll, we'll look at those two items, so thank you for that information, too. So motion on this?
Okay, move to approve the purchase of 100 fully upholstered chairs with arms in the amount of $16,500, utilizing Connecticut State Contract 15 PSX 0041. Funds will be used from the furniture account, $9,172, and from the Myrna Paulus Berlin Senior Center Fund, $7,328.
Second.
Thank you very much. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all is in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
Agenda item number five tonight is the opening of the annual POs for the Berlin Peckmore Library. The library belongs to the Connecticut Library Consortium out of Middletown. They provide us with a very good discounts on many of the materials that we need for the library. This year, we're requesting, as you see, approval for purchasing books from the Baker and Taylor Company for $43,000. Additional books for childrens and teens for $23,000 from Baker and Taylor, some miscellaneous supplies for data services from Library Connection at $37,000, and a network maintenance services from Novus for $10,850. Typically, Helen Malinki would be here, but she just returned from being out, so she's not here tonight. But this is, this is something we do on an annual basis. She works hard with the Library Connection to get the very good discounts, and this is what we usually do.
Okay, thanks. So we'll have a motion on this?
Okay.
Do you have one question though?
Sure, sure.
Before, where, is this already budgeted? There were no attachments, so...
She said there's no attachments. This is, this is through her budget.
Okay.
Library budget, yes.
Okay, thank you, just wanted to know.
Take a motion.
Okay, move to approve the purchase orders for the following vendors, due to the library's participation in the Connecticut Library Consortium and in the Library Connection, Inc., as the best discounts have already been provided. This is in the best interest of the town. Baker and Taylor Company for adult books of $43,000. Baker and Taylor Company for children's and teen books for $23,000. Supplies, data services from Library Connection for $37,000, and network maintenance, data services from Novus at $10,850.
Second.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
Okay, agenda item number six. Mark Kazakowski is here to discuss the recommendation from the committee on a TOD RFQ recommend firm. There's been quite a bit of study being done. If you remember, we sent out an RFQ probably early, early in the year. We've been meeting, there's been a group of us who've been meeting with, first of all, the people who submitted the, their proposals, but also with many different agencies in the town to see how this, how their proposals fit in with the plan of economic development with the town. Anyway, Mark's here to go through the recommendation and to talk about all the studies that we did.
Okay, great. Hi, Mark.
Hi, I'm Mark Kazakowski, town planner. I'd like to start with a little bit of background to what led us to here. So the town currently owns about 3.8 acres of continuous land comprising of three parcels that were acquired at various times. The property is directly adjacent to the Berlin train station as a frontage on Farmington Avenue. All the buildings have been demolished and a significant amount of environmental testing has been done on the site. Also, the State of Connecticut has granted the town some money for environmental remediation and to build a road to provide better access to the train station. So this area has been of interest for quite a long time now. The first discussion that I've seen of it in print at least was in the 1992 Plan of Development, where it discussed developing, and I quote, "A dynamic commercial area in the town center with mixed uses, pedestrian access, traffic management, and calls for a pleasing aesthetic environment." And those sentiments were carried forward in the 2003 Plan of Conservation Development and the 2013 update of the POCD. And in 2015, the Planning and Zoning Commission went on to establish the Kensington Village Overlay Zone with new zoning regulations and the establishment of a village district in accordance with state statutes around this train station. And last summer, the Economic Development Commission worked with a consultant to develop the TOD Kensington Downtown Village Plan. After that, the Economic Development Staff issued a request for qualifications to seek development firm that can bring innovative ideas for mixed-use development in the center of Kensington Village. We received five proposals from developers, and those firms were from Connecticut, Massachusetts, and New York. And generally speaking, all the proposals had a heavy residential component ranging from 60 market rate units to 120 units, all affordable at 60% area meeting income. All the proposals had a commercial component, and four of the five relied on public financing and tax credits. Then the town council went on to organize a review committee to review the qualifications and to make a recommendation. The committee consisted of Jack Healy, town manager, David Seer, chairman of the Economic Development Commission, Christopher Coppola, also from the Economic Development Commission, Marie Jousty, assistant town planner, and zoning enforcement officer, and myself, the town planner. In January, over the course of two days, all the firms came in, presented their qualifications and their vision for the property. After that, we had a debriefing meeting and realized that we needed some help determining how this vision was going to impact town services, infrastructure, and the basic fabric of the community. We invited several stakeholders into the process to provide their input based on their expertise. We bought, brought in the police chief, the fire department president, the tax assessor, the chairman of the Planning and Zoning Commission, and Economic Development Staff. We also interviewed representatives from the Historic Society and Berlin Steel. We discussed many topics, including how dense residential development will impact town services, infrastructure, and tax revenue. We discussed public safety and the downtown and train station as resources for the community. The 2013 POC identifies a goal of the town, which reads in part, "An improved town center with a sense of place that helps give eloquence to the essence of Berlin." And in this plan, this area was identified as part of the heart of Berlin. This site in the Kensington Downtown had its great potential to serve current residents as well as provide opportunity to bring in other people from the state to live, work, and, and shop here within close proximity to highways and the train station. And having a transit stop will provide a major benefit and amenity. I personally have benefited by living close to a train station. When I was hired by the town of Greenwich, my wife and I moved to the shoreline and bought our first home in West Haven, and from there, I commuted over 10 years using the Metro-North Train Line. I had a multimodal commute where I would drive, walk, and take the train to work every day. And once West Haven opened up their own train station, I was able to walk from my home to the train, and we ended up selling my car because it sat unused in my driveway. The train was part of every day of my life. Not only, you know, I used it to commute to work, it provided easy access to services and entertainment. We took the train to Fairfield to bring our kids to the dentist, and we always went to a restaurant before we came home. We took the train one stop to go to Milford, to go to the St. Patrick's Day Parade, as well as the Milford Oyster Festival, where we would, you know, enjoy food and visit vendors and enjoy live music. And my wife and I would take the train to sporting events and go out at night on date nights, and we would go, you know, in the afternoon to our favorite brewery in Shreveport. So through my own experiences, I know that that transit stop can provide a tremendous good and be an asset to the community, community with the right development around it. good and be an asset to the community with the right development around it.
Appreciate you taking one car off ninety-five.
There you go.
Any car off ninety-five is helpful for all of us that may drive it.
So, within this request for qualifications, the town reserved the right to deny or not accept any of these requests. We reserve the right to advertise for new requests for RFQ, and we had the ability to choose one RFQ that was deemed in the best interest of the town. In this process, we reviewed qualifications from five very different development firms that essentially had the same conceptual plan, which was bringing a large-scale residential development with some commercial component. None of them effectively show how it'll work towards developing a town center or how they'll pump blood into the heart of Berlin. So, we approached this selection from the viewpoint of choosing who we feel we can work collaboratively with through the process and develop a plan that would meet the goals of the community. So, it is a community's recommendation to choose the Newport Realty Group, L.C., out of Southington, Connecticut. The principals are Mark Lovely of Lovely Development and Tony Valenti of New England Hotels. Mark Lovely is a local developer who has completed many projects in Berlin, in and around Berlin. They will also be privately financed. The other four developers required a significant amount of public financing and tax credits to support their vision of transit-oriented development. When we brought them in to share their qualifications and their plans, they all made it very clear that time was of the essence, and they needed to push their plan through the Planning and Zoning Commission process for site plan approval so they could submit their applications to the state to apply for financing through the Connecticut Housing Finance Authority. This iterative process of developing a plan would inhibit the need, would be inhibited by the need to act quickly and the need for the developer to maintain residential densities needed to be awarded public financing. The committee feels by choosing a local developer that does not rely on public financing, the project can be molded to better suit the Berlin master plan for the train station Farmington Avenue downtown area. We can take the time needed to develop a plan that has buildings to scale, mixing, mixes of uses, pedestrian access, public spaces that provide a sense of place. We can take time to rethink the site plan that satisfies the goals and principles of both transit-oriented development and downtown village districts and successfully navigate through the regulatory approval process. It'll take time to develop a partnership with Newport Realty Group as they would ultimately take ownership of the property and have the responsibility of contributing to the health and sustainability of the town center. So, based on the recommendation, we request that the town council move to allow staff to negotiate exclusively with Newport to develop a conceptual plan.
Thank you for that presentation. That brings us up to date. I know you guys have worked hard on the committee, spent a lot of time, you know, a lot of drudgery, and it's tough to get through what you had to get through, and we appreciate it. I mean, I think we all realize that, you know, with what has developed there, I think the train looks like it's already successful, which is great. Hopefully, that continues. That will help us, and I think it's, we know it's such a crucial development, and it's, you know, very unusual in the history of Berlin. We've got that town center area, which has been talked about for years, that we've never really had a piece of property like that to develop. So, it's so, so crucial to us. So, I know we've been proceeding very slowly, and I appreciate that. I think we all appreciate that. The whole community does, because I think when we had the other consultant in here earlier in the year and they presented their report, I don't think a lot of people were necessarily happy with what they had come up with. And again, that was just the consultant. That was just some, you know, possible direction that we could do, but I think many townspeople, many people I heard from, a lot of people, you know, people on the council, economic development, and planning and zoning, and many other town officials, you know, I don't know if we were happy with that. So, we know, you know, we probably were looking for a little bit different direction of going, and which is what you mentioned in your talk today. So, that's great. So, just to start off the discussion and, you know, please all join in. So, the only thing I would ask first of all up would be if we do vote on this, right, there's no commitment, no contractual commitment, you know? If you start down the road of some meaningful discussion and we get to a place that, you know, and I'm sure we'll have, you know, a public hearing or two on this as well as we get further down the road with what the concept may be. If we don't like it, town doesn't like it, townspeople don't like it, council, you know, whatever group of people says, "Look, it's really not for us," there's no tying us to Newport development at this point.
At this point, no.
At some point, if we get there, we understand.
If we get there, if we develop a plan that we're satisfied with, they're satisfied with.
Come back to the council, go to planning, go through the process.
Through that process, yeah.
So, you know, that's important for everybody of the public to know, because I've already, when people saw this on the agenda, I already had calls. People were nervous in hearing of the last consultant with, you know, whatever they had proposed. I said, "No, no, no, we're not anywhere near, you know, that point. We just found a developer that we believe we can work with through all these, you know, the committee's hard work, and we still, though, are far off from what the plan will ultimately look like." So, I said, "There will be plenty of chances for the public to comment and for various boards and commissions to comment." Right? That's.
Agree, I agree.
Okay, so just.
Yeah.
Does this include, for lack of a better term, a boulevard into the TOD?
Yes, it's very much part of our plan. We did receive some grant funding for that. I'm not exactly sure what the exact dollar amount is, but we do have that. We do have plans in the office that have been kind of shelved, waiting for a better sense of what development of the site's going to be.
Thank you.
So, I find this all really exciting, and I find it exciting because of the potential that there is there. And I'm glad you shared your story about where you live and where you work and using the train and how much you used it, because I think that's what makes living in New York City and Boston so great, is you have the infrastructure, and people don't even need to use cars anymore. I think a lot of people nowadays, or kids, aren't even getting their licenses anymore because they're just using Uber and trains and public transportation. And doing something like this, I think, gets out in front of it. It grows Berlin. It seems like a diversified plan, and I know it's still at its inception, but it'll grow Berlin, it'll bring a stronger tax base, and, you know, I think it'd be better for everyone in the town because of the conveniences and the essence that it would offer and the outside people that will come in. So, I think you guys are doing a fantastic job. Economic development also, I want to give you guys accolades. Dave and Chris, I appreciate it, too. And it's got my vote for today, so.
I thought when I read this that it was a great choice, so thank you, Mark.
Thank you.
Yeah, I want to reiterate much of what Alex said. I've read so many articles and studies about how millennials now are just really mostly about just public transportation and trains, you know, downsizing in homes. So, even, I don't know what the residences are that are planned over there. I'm assuming that they're probably smaller spaces in nature, but, yeah, but, yeah, I think it's absolutely fantastic.
And I wouldn't even just say millennials. I may be on the cusp of age.
Right.
I had, you know, I have too many children to call myself a millennial.
No, did. Right.
Had her family car, and I didn't need one when I was commuting by train.
Mm-hmm.
Awesome.
It is, though. It's very exciting. So, you know, it's neat to know that this is kind of going to be the hub of our town and that it's going to be just so wonderfully used eventually. Yeah, thank you.
I just wanted to mention that I'm glad that we looked at this in a different approach and brought in other stakeholders like our police and fire, because I don't think that was done before. And to me, you know, you look at the opposite end of the spectrum from this comparative chart you gave us, and you're looking at a, you know, three hundred residential units and ninety million dollar project. Well, that sounds enticing, but to me, what you just said is they want to ram it through and won't give us a chance to absorb any of this and do it the way we want. And I think that was a good choice here.
Okay, great. Appreciate that input from everyone. We know it's just, you know, it is all exciting and it's great, and, you know, we will proceed. I know everyone involved has already proceeded cautiously and what's in the best interest of our community, and, you know, we'll get a lot more public input, too, as we go. So, that's very important, so everyone has something to say about how we develop that, you know, parcel, which is some, obviously, public parcel there that we own. So, that's important for all the taxpayers to have their input. So, that's great. So, any other comments from anyone? Hearing none. We'll go ahead and take a motion on this?
Okay, I will make a motion to allow the town staff to negotiate exclusively with Newport Realty Group, LLC to further develop a conceptual site plan for the TOD slash downtown village development on the properties located at eight eighty-nine, nine oh three, and nine thirteen Farmington Avenue.
Second. Thank you very much. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Thanks, Mark. Appreciate all your hard work, Dave, Maureen, Chris, everyone who worked on it, Jack. Lot of work. Still a lot to go. We get it. Thank you.
Agenda item number seven is to authorize the town manager to enter a professional service agreement with Mackey Engineers. Each year we have, each, or every certain, every several couple of years, we have to update the emergency action plans for the two town-owned dams, the Paper Goods Dam and the Kensington Dam Railroad Pond Dam. We went through and we looked at a couple of different consultants. We are using Mackey Engineers currently, as I believe you know, for the engineering on the Railroad Pond Dam update. Instead of going out and having people do resurveys and do reengineering and things, we've talked about just having Mackey Engineers do the EAPs for us. Matt Odisha is here to discuss any questions you have about the emergency action plans and the selection of Mackey Engineering.
Evening.
Hey, how are you, Matt? What do we, what else we need to know?
Basically, I think Jack has summed it up. Mackey is doing the work on one of the dams, the repair work, and the reason this cost is so high is the last time the, any calculations were done on inundation mapping for in the event of a dam breaking was probably ten years ago, twelve years ago, and DEEP has now required that we do recalculations. And that's why the plan itself, or the cost is so high, because we have to do both dams, so I have to do the recalculation on both dams. And as Jack has said, it would make sense to bring Mackey in since they are actually doing the permitting for the repairs on the railroad bridge dam, and part of the permit process is to have a up-to-date emergency action plan. So, it just makes sense to keep them in the loop and let them do all the work for us.
Okay. Any other, any questions for Matt? Nope. Hearing none. We'll go ahead and take a motion on this?
I move to authorize the town manager to enter into a professional services agreement with Mackey Engineers, LLC in the amount of forty thousand dollars to complete emergency action plans for the two town-owned dams.
Second.
Thank you very much. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved. Thank you, Matt. Thanks.
Agenda item number eight tonight is to approve budget transfers the end of the year. Unfortunately, Kevin Delaney's at the Board of Finance meeting, so he can't be here tonight to go through each one of them in detail, but we're requesting that you approve the transfer forty-eight thousand five hundred and ninety-five dollars and nineteen cents. You have the detail on the spreadsheet. Again, this is what we do at the end of the year. We make various transfers to balance out the books and make sure that each account has everything covered. So, that's the detail. If any questions, I'll try to answer them or I'll get Kevin.
Okay. Any questions? Hearing none, we'll take a motion on this?
Okay, move to transfer forty-eight thousand five hundred and ninety-five dollars and nineteen cents as detailed on the accompanying spreadsheet to cover higher-than-budgeted expenditures in the identified accounts.
Second on that?
Second.
Thank you. Any further questions? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved.
Agenda item number nine tonight is the request for approval of a tax abatement for OT Partnership for the construction of twenty-five thousand square foot expansion, fifty percent in the first year, forty percent the second year, thirty percent the third year, based on the town's tax abatement policy. And Chris Edges is here to discuss the details.
Good evening, all. Thank you for the support of the RFQ recommendation. Very exciting time for Berlin. OT Partnership is actually the company that owns the building where Tom's Corporation is on Episcopal Road. Tom's Corporation is a manufacturer of medical devices that literally go into the human body. They're at about a hundred and fifty, going to go up to two hundred and fifty employees. I believe this is their sixth expansion in twenty years. They've been absolutely tremendous. They've actually helped Goodwin College in East Hartford on setting up a training program. So, they are one of the best people I have. It's now being run by the Sun. Just to kind of give you an idea of where the industry is, the average worker in their place was about forty-nine years old, two and a half years ago. Today, it is in the low thirties. So, he is doing what many people are struggling with, a great company to work with, and essentially asking for a three-year tax abatement on the twenty-five thousand square foot expansion, which, interestingly enough, actually includes a bigger cafeteria because they have too many people to sit in a cafeteria at once. So, very exciting, great company. It's something we're very proud of for all of us in Berlin.
Nice problem to have. Okay. Any questions for Chris? Hearing none. We'll go ahead and take a motion.
Okay, move to approve a tax abatement for OT Partnership for the construction of a twenty-five thousand square foot expansion of a fifty percent in year one, forty percent in year two, and thirty percent in year three of the town's tax abatement policy.
Second. Thank you very much. You know, we're so happy Tom's is here and expanding and doing well. That's just, that's wonderful. So, any other comments? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved.
Okay, agenda item number ten is to request approval of a contract amendment for alternate environmental engineering, for doing environmental management and compliance monitoring at the address of fifteen sixty-seven Berlin Turnpike. It's a contaminated site that we've been managing and remediating for several years. This is an annual contract. Some of it, a very small amount this year, is being paid for out of the insurance claims. The remainder comes out of the Public Works Department. We budget this money each year. We would request approval of the ALTA engineering because they've got the background on this site. Again, if we go out and we look for, we can go out for competitive bids, but then what happens typically with environmental consultants, they look to, they have to go through all the records, they have to spend time updating, getting themselves up to speed on the site before they go to work, and ALTA's been doing this for several years. Chris is here to ask any, or answer any questions you have about the work.
Yeah, and I think that if we went out to bid, it'd probably be close to ten thousand dollars just to get the other companies up to date. ALTA's been great to work with. This property, I believe, was formerly the Newman Property. The town, I believe, had purchased it with the intent of potentially expanding Sage Park, so it's right on the Turnpike.
Oh, yeah.
We're kind of working our way down on the amount of the cost of testing, and I know, again, it's still looked at. There's no development currently, but it's a great opportunity to expand Sage Park. These guys have been good to work with, both Jimmy and Jim Mahoney and I work with them on a regular basis, and any time we have a question, we ask them, and they've been very, very helpful.
Is this, so you said you were working our way down, so at some point?
The belief would be that the cost would go down. Again, we have to get DEP to agree to it.
Yeah.
But we're currently looking at a couple of other properties on, and we bring the amount of testing down.
Right.
Because that is in our best interest. Again, we want to test it, but just to make sure. Again, the intent is to work with them, have them help us to approach them, to do less monitoring.
Yeah, okay.
Particularly what you do, Mark, on this, is you continue to do the testing, and as you're able to show that the levels of concentration on any contaminant there are decreasing, continuously decreasing, get to what they call a non-detect or below detection limit or below safe limits, then what you do is you appeal to, you look DEP, request permission to decrease the amount of testing. Normally, you go from quarterly to semi-annually to annually, and eventually, if you can determine that there's no risk to the public, you can risk it, what they call risk it out, and just continue the sampling altogether. We're working on, I think Jim successfully negotiated that on a couple of the sites this year, so we are working on, trying to continually decrease the amount of sampling because most of these sites are mature. The source has been remediated, so there's no ongoing source. So, what you're doing now is just monitoring.
As Jack had said, this was actually an item in the Public Works budget, so this isn't, some of them, we have to find the money. This one was actually put in place because we knew that this is going on, so it'll really be something that hopefully will, as it goes down, stay in the budget, but we won't have to scramble to find the money. So, I think that was also very well done, Board of Finance, Jack, Jim Mahoney, and this board, to put those kind of things in, which are important, but we do have them in there.
Is this parcel by Sage Park in front?
It is. It's the one right between Sage Park and.
The old auto dealership that was there?
Yep, yeah, former auto use, and the property's been discussed a couple of different times. We own it at the moment, so again, we kind of control the future. We own it at the moment, so again, we kind of control the future. I think it kind of depends where things go with Sage Park. My own opinion, I think it would be great to use it in a maybe non-athletic way to expand the athletics further in the complex. But again, that's just me, but I think it's a nice asset to have for the long term for the town.
Okay. We'll take a motion on this?
Okay. Move to waive the bidding procedures since this is in the best interest of the town and authorize the town manager to enter into an amendment to the town's agreement with ALTA Environmental Consulting to provide additional environmental consulting services related to 1567 Berlin Turnpike for a fee not to exceed $10,400, with 400 of the costs of the project to be funded from the insurance claims account and $10,000 from the Public Works Department contractual services account.
Okay, great. Second on that?
Second.
Thank you very much. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Chris.
Agenda item number 11 is to the approval of the Berlin Emergency Dispatchers contract. Denise Parsons put this together. Unfortunately, Denise is on vacation, or fortunate for her, but.
Lucky her.
Anyway, we went, the, the contract expired in June of 2017. The union membership changed their affiliation. They decertified from the White Collar Contract Group and set up their own Berlin Emergency Dispatchers Bargaining Group. Negotiations were worked on last fall and, and it came through final mediation in April and has been ratified by the, by the dispatchers. There's a list of items that were changed. And when we say removed from the contract, it was, the base of the contract was, was the White Collar Contract. And there was negotiation back and forth on what items would stay, what items would be removed. As far as the wages go, there's a 2.25 percent, that's the one always seems to, what people want to know. They got a 2.25 wage increase annually retro to July 1st, 2017. Again, it goes into, they just received that increase July 1st of this year, and they also will get that increase in July 1st of 2019. There are other items here which you can see were removed and added based on the negotiations. And from a town standpoint, I think that we were, we were happy with the, with the outcome of the negotiation. And I, I think that the dispatcher for. Satisfied.
Okay. Questions? Concerns?
The new administrative dispatcher position?
Yes.
Is that like a new class within dispatcher? Is there a different pay scale or same pay or?
There was a new pay scale for that position, but there wasn't additional, was not an additional person.
So they would be like in charge of like scheduling and stuff like that or?
Can I?
Can you come up? You have to go up here on the line.
We're sorry. The rules. Sorry. Sorry about that.
I don't have any information. I went. Sorry about that. That position is actually, a good one to mention it because I've already been doing it for a while now. The position would just be extra duties put on your dispatch position, your full-time position. And what we'll be doing is the state audit. We have to enter to the state for all our collectancy IC outlets and everything else. So everything we run with registrations, our wants and warrants, also for our data entry into the system, all of our weapons management, basically all the data entry that's in our software system for that, the upkeep of our software system. It would be scheduling for training. I don't have the rest of the tasks in front of me. It is a, a lot of additional tasks on top of the job. There's.
Does it hold like a supervisory level?
No.
Okay.
Nope. It is not going to be a supervisory position. It's plenty with all of the administrative stuff, but it's not a separate, we would need an additional dispatcher if we were having a supervisor position.
Is that a tested position or is it just chosen or?
It was, it's going to be, I believe it was decided upon. We don't have that back yet. But everyone who has met the requirements of that position, which is five years and above, you can put in a letter of intent, which is what our detective bureau and a lot of other specialty teams and services downstairs do at the police department. So we can put in a letter of intent and then the chief will interview everyone and then he will make the decision from there. It's on his chief.
Okay.
Very good. And then I guess last question is what's the pay increase? There's probably an increase of more work, right?
Right. It was five, 10, and 10 over the three years. Because it's a three-year contract, we are behind a year, but it's a three-year.
Percentages, five, 10.
Percentages, five, 10, and 10.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thanks. Sorry to have to make you come up here.
Thank you.
All right. You did a great job.
That was why I didn't try to give you all the detail.
Yeah, right. Good she was here. You know, only because I think many of us get asked, obviously, the, the focus that most people, when they look at budget contracts, is the raises, right? That seems to be what people focus in on. And I know Kevin Roy is, is great at negotiating as, I know, you know, you're representing the town, Jack. You know, so that I assume is in line with what we have seen, you know, in the marketplace and, you know, like just because that's a question, you know, for folks to hear it.
Yeah. I mean, it's in line with what we've negotiated with other units within the town.
Right.
But it's also when we get the data from CCM, we are within the data from CCM. We're not, we're not above, you know, we're about in the middle of the road for, even for the data with CCM.
Okay. No, I mean, that's, you know, I mean, at least as, you know, as I know, but again, a lot of members of the public don't realize, you know, obviously, the, a time that everybody spends on this and obviously, there's a lot of data from other towns and it's obviously, you know, we, we look at that and it's just good to get that out there and people understand we're doing our due diligence for the taxpayers and to pay our dispatchers and our Berlin Town employees what's, you know, what's fair in the marketplace. So, all right. Any other questions? If not, we'll take a motion.
Okay. Move to approve the contract between the Town of Berlin and CALU Local 911 Emergency Dispatcher Employees for the period of July 1st, 2017 through June 30th, 2020.
Second on that?
Second.
Thank you very much. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved.
Agenda item number 12 is approval of, requesting waiving of the town's bidding procedures and award a contract to Hewlett-Packard for hardware and software support on our, on our systems within the town. Going back to 2012, the town at one point had separate contracts and they've, they've combined the contracts for hardware and software with Hewlett-Packard. It provides us with a very good support. It allows us, we feel as an overall to save money. We come to the town, the town council because at this point, the, the amount of, the bid is over, the cost of the support services is $10,188. So it's $188 over our $10,000 threshold. It's a recommendation of Barbara Sagan, the IT Department, that we award the contract because of the best interest of the town to Hewlett-Packard.
Okay. Any questions? Concerns? Mega motion?
We'll move to waive the town's bidding procedures and award a contract to Hewlett-Packard Enterprise for hardware and software support in amount not to exceed $10,188 since this is in the best interest of the town.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved.
Agenda number 13 is an acquisition of an easement for the Burnham Street Bridge Project. As part of that project, we need to acquire a small amount of property as an easement from the, from Philip and Mary Ann Molsky at 114 Burnham Street. If you, going down Burnham Street toward Farmington Avenue would be the last house prior to the bridge on the right-hand side. Mr. Molsky is a, works on, I guess, very high-quality car, automotive engines, race car engines. You probably know, Peter. We've been talking with them about acquiring this. They've been very good to work with on, on this, on this easement. They've been very cooperative. So we need to, as part of the process, acquire an easement from them so that we can do this project. Now, at this point, the project is on hold, but we'll need that, that easement to do the project. The reason it's on hold, we've kept you up to date on this, if we are still waiting for releases of the state funding, that project has state funding for reconstruction of that bridge.
Okay. Take a motion on this?
All right. Move to approve the acceptance and filing upon land records of bridge easement from Philip and Mary Ellen Molsky of 114 Burnham Street, also known on a plan entitled Right of Way Survey, Town of Berlin. Map showing easement to be acquired from Philip and Mary Ellen Molsky by the Town of Berlin. Placement of Bridge Number 04473, Burnham Street over the Mattabasset River. And the scale is one inch equals 20 feet, dated May 2018.
Thank you. Second on that?
Second.
Thank you very much. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved.
Agenda item number 14. At a recent ordinance committee meeting, there were several ordinances that the committee asked, had reviewed and asked to have written so that we could take it to public hearing. The first of those is the change in our ordinance, Section 4-40, payment of delinquent taxes required for issuance of permits and licenses. This one specifically is in reference to, we have an ordinance which requires a landlord to pay, is responsible for a tenant's personal property tax if that person, if that individual leaves the town and doesn't pay their property tax. It, the way it's written, that we would, the town would not issue them any more building permits or other certificates until that personal property was, tax was paid by the, by the landlord. I think, you know, we've talked this back and forth. I'm not sure that, I don't know that there's too many towns that have this ordinance. And therefore, we, we've had a, we were proposing an amendment to the ordinance or changing the ordinance such that that requirement would go, would be eliminated.
Yeah. So I know we'll have a public hearing. Yeah. I mean, it just seems crazy that, so I don't know what else to call it, that we would hold the landowner responsible for personal property tax on a tenant that, you know, leaves town or doesn't pay. I mean, that's not his responsibility. I'm not sure how that got passed, but it did. So if we can undo what most of us, I think, on the ordinance committee felt was, all of us felt, it was not correct and not right to do that to our landowners and less or so. Anyway, so we'll have a motion on this for a public hearing.
Okay. Move to authorize the town manager to schedule and advertise setting a public hearing for Tuesday, July 24th, 2018 at 7:00 PM on an ordinance amending Section 4-40, payment of delinquent taxes required for the issuance of permits, licenses, or certificates.
Second. Thank you. Second on that?
Second.
Thank you very much. Any further comments? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved.
Agenda item number 15 is another ordinance, a recommendation from the ordinance committee. This one specifically is referenced to Section 16-11, Abatement of Property Tax, and 16-12, Abatement Agreement Lean. If you remember during the budget season, it was a considerable amount of discussion about programs that we could implement for our elderly or other citizens who qualify to abate their taxes. The town has, has that program in place, but it was a program where we placed a lien on the property and that the different, that would cap the, the property tax where it was at that moment, the application. And any increases would not take place until such time that either the property was transferred in ownership or the individual passed away. It was requested of the ordinance committee that we eliminate that provision of the lien and just cap the, cap the, the tax at the time of the application. That does seem to be consistent with several other towns. So Jen Capola has made, has made, written you a draft of a, of a tax abatement program eliminating the lien provision.
Okay, great. And we'll obviously have a public hearing and members of the public could speak, but I think it was, again, agreed upon unanimously that, that would help our seniors and others that are at certain income levels. And obviously, they will continue to pay property tax. They just won't not have to pay the, the increase every year while they own that property and are residing there. So seems like a, a very good policy to implement. So we'll discuss it at our public hearing further. So motion for the public hearing?
Excuse me. I have a few questions.
Sure.
So Jack, a couple of questions about this. What other towns have this in there without placing a lien?
I don't, I don't have the list with me, but several other towns do this, eliminate, have taken away the lien provision. I can get that information and send it to you.
Yeah, I would like that. And the reason I'm asking is the state of Connecticut has certain programs for seniors, low-income seniors. And a lot of times, not a lot of times, most of the times unless the person has gone on Medicaid and is, doesn't have their house anymore, the, they don't recoup money. But a lot of times with somebody who has a house and remains in their home, the state then recoups money from them. So I, you know, I question in terms of the town, if we, you know, we're giving seniors the ability to stay in their home. So is there a benefit, yes, to the senior, but if they should die or when they die or when they sell their home, having the ability to recoup some money to our town is in line with what the state does as well. So I, I just kind of question this in terms of, is it the right thing to do for our town? And so I would like to know what other towns are doing.
Okay.
Or which other towns are doing this.
Well, that'll come out in a public hearing. I mean, that's, that's why, I think, as I recall, we did this because seniors currently aren't taking advantage of this because they don't want the lien on their property.
And I hear that, but I'll give you a, for instance, I had an elderly aunt. I put her on Connecticut Community Care and Corporate. She also was on QMB and Slimby. And when she died, I had to repay the, the state of Connecticut $15,000. And I will tell you, I was thrilled that she was able to stay in her home, independent, with some care. And it was a privilege staying in her home, and I didn't once flinch with paying back the state. And I, I think that we should, you know, be responsible for what we're doing. And I'm not sure that removing a lien or at least not repaying a portion of it is in the best interest for our town.
The way that the revised ordinance or proposed revised ordinance is set up, it says the provision that, in the existing ordinance, it says that it's a lien against the property is proposed to be deleted. But the language that requires the deferred taxes with interest to be due and payable upon sale or transfer of the property or upon the death of the owner remains. So the obligation is still there for them to pay it back.
Okay.
And the way that you make sure that that doesn't get missed is you record a copy of the deferral agreement on land records. It's just eliminating it as a lien.
Okay.
But there's still an obligation to repay it at death.
Okay. Well, then that's exactly what I would be looking for. So thank you.
It's still the same exact thing is?
It's just eliminating. It's just eliminating the...
A lien?
It's not a lien, but it's still an...
Same program without a lien.
I mean, I could, I could make the argument that it is a lien because it's an encumbrance for the trust of the property.
Yeah, right.
Okay.
You have to satisfy that obligation or you can't convey title. It's the only way to protect the town.
Perfect.
I've seen other towns where they, they don't record it because they don't want to cloud land records, and then you're relying on the county clerk's office to police it.
Mm-hmm.
And it's just not reasonable to expect state staff...
Right. That's perfect, then. Thank you for that clarification. I appreciate that.
What would be the legal benefit of not having a lien as opposed to just having it on the land record?
Well, if they want to do a reverse mortgage, or if they want to do a home equity loan or some other type of transaction to tap into equity in the property, and there's a tax lien, it may be construed as a delinquent obligation.
As opposed to a tax abatement for the benefit?
Exactly.
Okay. You know, I, I must have missed that at the meeting, but I, I thought we were eliminating that completely because I thought Mr. Delaney, he wasn't at the meeting, right, Jack? But, but remember, we talked about, he had done some calculations on, we had some rough figures on what it would mean to, I thought, eliminate the mean in any encumbrance, was what I know we had been discussing with the public, and I've discussed with different people, so I, and I thought the figures that we talked about were not...
They weren't very much.
They were not a large obligation to the town and based upon, and I know we were going to also, I thought, revise the, the lim, the income limits to be consistent with federal and state limits, or what?
I think, and that was my next question.
Yeah.
Are the income limits, are you going to go by the federal poverty rate versus putting on an actual income limit? Because $29,000 today may not buy you the same thing $29,000 10 years from now.
Right. I think, I think we talked about the federal poverty level, right?
The federal poverty level.
Level, yeah. Is that, is that, that's what I thought we were...
That's what I had mentioned before.
Yes. I thought we were talking about that, changing that too, right? So if we do the public hearing, I, I just think we need maybe a little bit more information based upon what you have said, and just I'd like to get some of those, because I don't think, I don't know if we had the actual projections from Mr. Delaney. I wonder if we should just, what do, do we have to, can we take no action, delay the public hearing till a following meeting, or do we have to go back to the ordinance committee? Either way, we can get it done. But I just, I, you know, let's get a little bit more info.
Wouldn't that come out at the public hearing?
Well, might, but, yeah, I mean, I guess it could.
We don't have to act on it that night either, so.
Yeah, we have to act on it. Do we have to act on it? We don't? All right, you know what then? Okay, let's do the public hearing, let's get a bunch of it, let's get some more information, and then we, maybe we, and we'll see, you know, hopefully the public, you know, has some input, but, and then we can...
Let's get it out there so we can get some feedback.
Yeah, we could sit down on it a little bit and, you know, if we think we need to, and discuss it a little bit more, but at least have a public...
Yeah, and I did have one more question. What was the federal poverty level, 250% of the federal poverty level? Were you using that as a guideline?
I believe so, yes.
Perfect, because that's what I use as well in my job.
You provided that to me, I believe we used.
Okay, great. Thank you.
So that'd be consistent.
Yeah, that's a rare, like, I'll give you an example. The United Way uses that figure in determining, you know, need, and it, and it does vary.
Yeah.
I've seen it vary in the last three years, so I think it's a reasonable way to go.
Okay.
And, you know, it, it allows for inflation.
Yeah, okay. So, based upon that...
That was the input that we used. It was based on the conversation that we had, that we would use that as the, as the guidance for.
Thank you.
Okay, great. So, you know, just, Jack, if you could make sure we have some of that information, you know, maybe some dollar amounts from Kevin, and, you know, we could have some more discussion, have our public hearing, and, you know, then we, we may or may not decide that evening.
Okay, so you still want the item down at the public hearing?
Yeah.
And then you still want it as a topic to be per se voted on that night, but you may not vote on it then?
Yeah, we, we don't have to vote on it, right?
Correct.
If we don't, yeah, okay.
It's always better to say you might and then not, if you, you know.
Yeah, let's do that. That's fine.
But then it would delay it to September.
All right, yeah, I mean, I, that's fine. I don't think that's a large...
Just so that everybody understands.
Yeah, that's not a large burden on anyone. I know this program, I mean, one of the things we were looking at was, remember, none of us knew we had this program until we kind of...
Right.
So, but then we realized nobody was using it. So we, that's what we were like, no, that doesn't really do anybody any good, so that's why we were talking about...
Updating it.
Updating it, so, you know, so it's all, it's all a good discussion though, so that's good. We'll leave it as it is. So we'll take a motion for the public hearing.
Excuse me. Move to authorize the town manager to schedule and advertise setting a public hearing for Tuesday, July 24, 2018, at 7:00 p.m. on an ordinance amending Section 16-11, abatement of property tax, application in Section 16-12, abatement agreement lien, and the town council may consider and act upon this amendment following the public hearing.
Okay, second on that?
Second.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all is in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved. Thank you.
Agenda item number 16, I'm going to ask you not to vote on tonight. This one was requested, started with, because we have several situations in town where buildings, building permits are not being requested and certificates of occupancy haven't been. During that, during that discussion, we found that there was also an incorrect reference in our current ordinances. It refers to the Boca Code, which is no longer in force. There's actually the International Residential Code and International Building Code, which is what was referenced now in the State Building Code. There's some discussion still going back and forth between our building department and our, and our council on this, and instead of trying to, what I decided to do is I'd ask you just to hold on this one to our next meeting, and we'll talk about this one in the future.
Okay. Sounds good.
No action.
No action. Okay, 17?
Agenda item number 17, again, this is another ordinance, and this one is about removal of snow and ice. What this is, as you know, the town has an ordinance for homeowners to shovel their sidewalks and make sure they're clear. We also are now requesting that the, that homeowners who have a fire hydrant on their property make sure that that is clear after the storm also. It's a safety issue to make sure that the hydrants are open in case of a fire. So we're just adding, we are requesting the addition of the paragraph B of Section 14-11, making the responsibility of homeowner to shovel around the fire hydrant.
Okay, so we'll take a motion on that?
Okay. Move to authorize the town manager to schedule and advertise setting a public hearing for Tuesday, July 24, 2018, at 7:00 p.m. on an ordinance amending Section 14-11, removal of snow and ice.
Second on that?
Second.
Thank you very much. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all is in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, so moved. 18?
18 is, agenda item number 18 is the new idling ordinance. There's been several conversations about idling trucks, specifically in the Commerce Street area. We've talked about different ways of, of trying to enforce no idling of vehicles. Currently, I posted the street out there saying no idling, but we, the posting has no, no teeth to it because we don't have an ordinance. So in, in response to that, we've drafted a new idling ordinance. It would go under Section 17-37. It would prohibit trucks from idling for more than a certain amount of time, and we've referenced that in the, in the attachment that we, that you should have received tonight.
Okay, we'll take a motion.
Good question.
Yes.
Perhaps this will come out at the, the hearing, but how is this enforced? I mean, let's say that somebody doesn't dig out their hydrant, or there's idling, or is there fines that are involved?
Yes, there, there are.
And what are they?
Well, this one, if you, if, in the, in the write-up, Section 17-37, paragraph B, it talks about the citation and fines. It would go through the police department, and it would, it would be based on the, the fine that we normally would charge under our fee schedule, and it also tells you if you're not paid within seven days, it would double, the fine doubles.
You know, it's funny, because I always thought we had to dig out our hydrant. So we have a hydrant on our property, and, you know, it's like, let me tell you, it's, dig it out. So I didn't know that there wasn't an ordinance for it. I was surprised to see this.
Got away with it. It's up through the cracks. You're a good citizen, you did it anyway, you know?
I wanted to thank you for that.
Thanks for doing it without an ordinance, right?
You're right.
Most people seem to, but I think some don't.
I know. Okay.
So, it's good to have that at least, you know, in there if we need it. And the, and this, you know, this idling thing has been an issue at, obviously, one of the businesses in particular, but it's good to have that. We had no way to enforce anything in that particular instance, so. So we'll take a motion to...
Okay. Move to authorize the town manager to schedule and advertise setting a public hearing for Tuesday, July 24, 2018, at 7:00 p.m. on an ordinance regulating the idling of vehicles.
Second on that?
Second.
Thank you very much. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all is in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries. Thank you.
Agenda item number 19 is a request for amendment to 2018 Town of Berlin Fee Schedule. This came from the ordinance committee recommendation. It was based on a meeting that the, that the mayor and I had with a, a vendor. That particular vendor, I believe, sold ice cream.
Yes.
And only had, it was only going to do one or two events in Berlin annually, and the, the fee was $200. And as she explained, it's not worth it to come over here for $200 fee, plus the other fees that she has to pay.
Plus the...
Health department fee.
The health department fee was $60, so we're talking $260 for a woman who, you know, had a little cart she pulled with her car, retirement job, and, you know, she, she said, it's not, it's not worth it, so.
It was interesting because simultaneously, the police were the ones receiving, you had to fill out the permit and collect the money, and they were going to make the recommendation to us also to change this. So what, what we've done, as you've seen, is to make it a tiered permit fee. You pay the one-time $50 application fee, plus $10 a month, or $100 per year for, for a permit.
Yeah, that's...
That way, if you're only going to do one, one event, you don't have to pay the $400 or the $200, you know, originally, and it saves you some money, and it allows, it allows people like balloon vendors and ice cream vendors who want to do one or two events in Berlin to come and do that.
Yeah, I think we had that problem at the Memorial Day Parade, too. Some of the, you know, the vendors, they didn't want to pay that much money, and I don't blame them. So, supporting some small businesses, that's great. So, we'll take a motion on this.
A motion to, to amend the 2018 Town of Berlin Fee Schedule.
Second on that?
Second.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all is in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, so moved. Thank you. So, we are at our town manager report.
Okay, the town manager report, it's going to be rather short because most of it's on the agenda. I will tell you that there's a group of us who've been working on the Hunter's ambulance contract. We got to the, we are negotiating with them, and the contract ended on June 30. Instead of trying to force a contract through, we signed an extension at the current rates to go to the end of July, but we are, we are just about, I'd say 99% done with the contract. We feel it's a good contract, but I've worked out the last couple of little details, so we extended the contract to July 31. I believe at the, at your next council meeting, we'll be, we'll be ready to make the, the recommendation on the extension of the contract. Our one bridge project which is going on right now, High Bridge, the High Road Bridge is going along at a, at a pretty good, it's, right now it's on, on time and on budget. We're paying, we're, we're making sure that we meet with them regularly to keep that going. The rest of the contract for road paving is, is on schedule at this point, and not going to, we're able to continue to do that and keep it on pace. One thing that, at the last meeting, you had, we had talked about, and I'm having as part of the town manager's update, but I'm not actually going to give it, is Jen, Jen Cho is here to give a presentation on field conditions. You had asked about our fields, the conditions of our fields, and information, and the usage. So Jen is here with Steve Wood. They've done, I would say, quite a, quite a detailed report for you on the fields, and they'd like to just, just bring you up to date in response to some of your questions.
All right, guys, thank you.
The good news is I talk quickly, so. Right. So, at our June Parks and Recreation Commission meeting, Stephen and I brought forth a PowerPoint presentation that showed pictures of our fields. We also broke down each field, who uses each field, and for how many hours per month each field is used, totaling the number of hours each field is used for the year. I didn't bring that to you because it was 95 slides, so this is an abridged version of what we went over. We presented with the commission two options. One option would be, our, our fields are drastically overused. We have a hard time maintaining them, thus deteriorating the condition of them because they are so overused. So we presented to the commission, we have two options. We can raise our non-local fees because our fees are very low compared to our surrounding towns. We could raise them drastically in, not hopes, but in thinking that maybe some teams, some of these groups would go back to their hometowns to play there instead of coming outside to come use ours because the fees would now be too high for them. The problem with that is, let's say, nobody walks away. We still have, they're willing to pay the fees, which, yes, generates more income, but at the same time, we're still faced with the problem of how do we maintain our fields? Eventually, we have to start closing them, thus eliminating some of the fields for even use. So the option, other option was to look over the next couple of years, next three to five years, strategic plan kind of thing, and see, okay, maybe we can limit the usage of our fields now, and by doing that, not taking off the high school sports, obviously, not taking off our local youth sports that provide so many opportunities for our residents, but looking at our non-local groups that are coming in. The income is not justifying the means anymore. I gave you guys a spreadsheet. The first page of it is the non-local groups. This is from January to December of 2017. So we brought in about $5,200. If we got those same groups for the same hours next year, we would already be down to $4,000, just because we've lost two groups that have gone to other places because they were not able to use Zip-a-Delly, and they didn't, they didn't want to use Beretta. I lost my train of thought. So, $4,000, when you take into account the usage of the field, we're at a point now where if, if we allow everyone that comes and gives us a reservation request, which is what we're doing now, everyone that comes and wants to use a field, they get to use a field. We make it work. We move people around, we find ways to make it work. However, when a field gets bad and needs work, we cannot shut it down. We don't have the capability to do that because if we need to move Berlin Youth Soccer off Sage Park Auxiliary Field to do work on it, we can't do it because we don't have somewhere else to you move them. We can't move now what's now a paying group. So, we looked into that, and that's why we decided, moving forward, just until the next couple of years, so we can kind of rebuild some of our fields and then see where we're at, to say no to non-local groups, which raises your question of a few other things. We still are going to have our special events, because that brought in $9,500 last year. With special events, it's important to know that with every time there's a special event, there's at least two grounds workers there that day working the event. So, Nutmeg Games is five, six games on Zip-a-Delly in a day, or not Zip-a-Delly, Beretta, they're moved to Beretta now. There's a grounds worker out there raking the field and grooming it after every single game. So they're there maintaining the fields during the course of play. If you look at, if we are allowed to shut down fields, if you look at the field conditions, for example, Sage Park Auxiliary, which is on the back of page one, we took these pictures in May 2018. That's the mouth of the goal, obviously, and then the bottom pictures, the left is that mouth of the goal with sod, new sod down, and the other one is the middle picture. I didn't have the middle picture up top because I thought the mouth of the goal kind of said what I was trying to get at. That's because we were able to move people off this field for six to eight weeks to let this sod catch and, you know, really start to develop. The same thing with the Sage One infield. This was taken April 2018. Since then, we redid the infield of Sage One, so we shut the field down completely for a couple of weeks, and it allowed these guys to lay more seed and do more work, add more, you know, run the irrigation more so, to make everything look better on the Sage One outfield. What am I, I'm just blabbering, so.
Questions? No, so, so, we eliminate the non-local groups for how many years? What are you thinking? Couple? Just see how it goes?
We, we look at it as a three to five-year plan.
Okay.
But still allow, like I said, the special event groups to come, because that's, we have the manpower to do that. And if you look at the third spreadsheet, let's just say if we decided, all right, we don't want to do that, let's just raise our fees dramatically.
Right.
You can see, just to be in competition with the other teams, I mean, we charge $65 per day. You give me $65, I give you a field for, for the day.
Okay.
You know, you could book it eight to four and have it eight to four for $65. You want to do that in, let's say Cromwell, you're paying $50 an hour, so now all of a sudden for eight hours, you're paying a lot more than $65. So we're looking, if we're going to raise the fees, we would have to do so drastically just to get in contention with the nearby towns.
I mean, if we, if we raise the fees, if we bring in more money, does that, would that help? Money we could use for the grounds crew to, it's not really that?
Budget is pretty, the budget is good.
Yeah.
We have plenty of money. We don't have, we have a good amount of money to put back into the fields to repair them. But it's like you look at the mouth of a goal.
Yeah.
It starts off as a little spot.
Yeah.
Then it's somebody's like picking, picking at a scab, and then it gets bigger, and then it gets bigger, and before you know it, we're looking at a hole that's 10, 10 by 20. Mom and dad are going out there with a broom on a Saturday before the game, and now they're just pushing it. Now we have an undulation, now we've got a tripping hazard. And we don't have the current time to get back in there and rebuild the field because we're going from soccer season to lacrosse season, flag football season, to a men's adult soccer league. We don't have the time to get back in there. We're now, with moving the non-local groups, we can take the non-local groups and say, I'm sorry, but we don't have a field. We can take the group that would have played on Sage Auxiliary, we can move them to Percival, or we can move them to McGee, and that, close that field now for six weeks, put new sod down, get it reestablished, and when the soccer season starts this fall, you've got a perfectly conditioned field. We've also met with youth soccer, and youth soccer is willing to work with us to play, make the fields non-regulation. Because certain fields don't have to be. U-10, U-9, unless it's a travel team or an AAU team or whatever it is, we can, we can modify the field that we can take the troubled areas out of it. So by moving it from 60, supposed to be 70 by 40, we can turn around and go 55 by 45 and remove that section right there, rebuild that, have the whole entire fall season or the spring season to rebuild it. Next year, the field's back to new. By us being able to shut down Sage One and Two, and Sage One this year, and try to rebuild the left field, which gets completely destroyed with youth football, and that's the premier field for girls varsity softball, we were able to shut that down, move those individuals that would have been there, which would have been Berlin Little League, put them on Senna Relli, or put them on McGee softball. By us giving ourselves more opportunities to relocate our local groups, gives us the time and the manpower to work on fields, and puts us back into the community and gives us a nicer place to go to. I mean, Mr. Ross will put it perfect today with, look at the difference between Zip-a-Delly and Beretta. That's a one year of just changing the way we've always done thing, done things. I mean, you're looking at, five years ago, we probably had four non-local groups. Over the last five years, we're probably up to 25 or 30 non-local groups who want to rent our fields. Our fields are used seven days a week. Front lot, the frontless lot pulling into Sage Park. Most of our kids play soccer there. It's a parking lot. It's a frisbee, it's a ultimate frisbee. It's lacrosse. I mean, it's non-stop used. It's the car show, the truck show, or whatever it is, but now we'll be able to move them to another field and put some time and effort into rebuilding that. It's non-irrigated, so it makes it harder, but we'll be able to do something in the spring or the fall to try to get some sod to take during our wet seasons. So it's not about saying no to the non-local, it's about rewarding our local groups with better fields.
Okay. What do you guys think?
I have a series of 200 questions. I, no. Couple of questions. What do we charge for lights? If someone wants to come in at night and use that field, is there a premium for the lights?
Which field? Because each, each field has a different...
Sorry, Zip-a-Delly.[1791.74] I'm sorry, Zipadelli.
Zipadelli, to use Zipadelli's lights, I believe, don't hold me to it, I think it's $45 an hour.
That sounds right, yeah.
For the whole night?
About $45 an hour.
Lights are per hour.
Per hour, okay. Do we know what it costs this?
It's less than $45. The way NU does it is they nail you for one giant surcharge once you turn them on for the beginning of the month. And then, from there, you pay whatever the rate is. We had Bigelow come out, do it a couple of years ago, and he did a whole entire study of what it actually cost. And us charging $65 for Scalise and $45 for Zipadelli, we were actually profiting a couple of dollars here and there. We weren't, it wasn't a giant loss to the town.
And I noticed there's one other group that uses Zipadelli, and they're a local team?
That was last year. That was prior to us only letting local groups.
As of right now, Berlin High School and, are the only groups that are using it.
Thank you. You know, I just want to draw everybody's attention to the last picture.
Yeah, and, you know.
It's stark difference.
We didn't get a before picture before we did the work on Zipadelli. I took that off of Google Earth, but it does kind of show what a difference it is.
And also, the women's softball field, I was up there the other day, and we put the stone down.
Yes.
And that, that's a difference.
That's a picture in here, too. Stone dust versus the dirt.
Nice job.
Huge improvement. We did that on Pettit's Field, and it's just a huge improvement.
Good job.
What else? What do you guys think?
The only thing, since everybody's here, maybe, Jack, we schedule a playing fields committee with the town council members and the park and recs.
That was something else I, yeah, I would really like to get.
Just so we could get more information in a, you know.
Yeah, we do that.
Smaller setting.
Since Steve and I have been working together, we've really, like, I've really gotten into the whole fields thing, and I think we've been doing a lot, and I would love to start those meetings up again.
That's a good idea.
Are the fees collected? Do they go into a fund to be used by you, or does it go into like the town's general?
Field rentals and lighting fees goes into the general fund.
The town?
Yes, with the exception of Nut May Games and Connecticut State Masters Games.
What does she want your decision?
Because they don't charge, we don't charge on field rentals, we get it waived. We only pay lights, and they pay to reimburse his grounds workers that are working overtime at $50 an hour. Any money we make from that, we consider profit that goes into a Sage Improvement Fund, which we then use to put back in the fields.
Okay. Which pays for the tarps on Zipadelli. This year, we're thinking of bringing in portable lights for Sage Auxiliary for the all season, to see if how that works. And that money will come out of it. You know, whatever special events we have at Sage, it goes into the Sage Improvement Fund, and then it goes back into the facility itself, whatever it might be.
The 4,000 just went back into the general fund.
Okay. So, tonight, what do we, we want to just have some more discussion before we do this? What are we looking for?
Well, I think Brendan said meet with the Fields Committee.
The Fields Committee?
Yeah, it's a good idea.
So, all right, so we'll have to schedule that.
Right, with you.
Yeah, and I, yeah.
Well, maybe.
We'll hash it out there.
They haven't met since I've been here, so I have no idea who's on it or anything, but, yeah.
So, we can, we'll set that up?
Yep.
And then we'll, we'll have some more discussion on that before we make, you know, make sure there's a consensus with them and the council. Does that make sense to you guys, everybody?
Yeah.
Yeah, absolutely. All right, thanks.
Thank you for that.
Thanks, thanks.
Thanks.
Town manager report is, the town attorneys forwarded a email to me, and their fees for the last year were within the annual retainer fees that they charges each year.
Okay, great.
Excellent.
Thanks. I just wanted to add, I don't know what we can add, we'll add it into the town manager's report. Just, you guys all got this letter from Mr. Benson and Mr. Anderson? Did you guys get that letter?
Yes.
Yeah.
So, I, just, yeah, so just, so, you know, and Jack and I had met, I know, so, I don't know who wants to give the best summary. I mean, this particular developer, if he read the material, we had Mr. D'Onofrio review it all, too. I had met with Mr. Benson and Mr. Anderson, I think a year, last year, we talked about it, this, the developer, what's, I forget his name, what's his, what's his name, whatever his name is. But, so, that agreement goes, goes way.
Associates.
Yeah, that goes way back, obviously, with the, with the, with the agreement. He, recently, he had gone to Planning and Zoning.
Merrick's here, too.
And, oh, yeah, good, Merrick, come on up. He had gone to Planning and Zoning, so, he had recently come into Planning and Zoning, right?
So, he came to the Planning and Zoning Commission in March to, for review of a conceptual site plan, where basically, he came in, presented an idea. It was a, not an application, it was not anything legally binding, just to get an opportunity to gauge a sense of, the feel of, from the Planning and Zoning Commission. And what he wanted to do was take 13 single-family lots that he, subdivision approval for.
Two-acre zone there? Two-acre zone, or one acre?
One-acre zone, or 43. 13 lots, and across those lots, develop a, kind of a planned community with 60 detached, single-family homes.
Three.
Across, across those, those properties. And, and upon review of that, we looked at the documents that came from the lawsuit that came before then. I think you guys had copies of that. And upon review of those documents, the Planning and Zoning Commission said they didn't feel comfortable, much less feel they had the authority to, to, to go against those documents, those court, you know, documents approved, approved the system.
That would have been a zone change, anyway.
It would have been a zone change, yeah.
Yeah, it changed the zone, first of all, and we had a lawsuit, and we had an agreement going back.
And there's an ordinance against.
Number of years, yeah.
2008, I think.
Yeah, that's a piece of great crap, above, above the clubhouse there. So, so that's where it ended with them.
That's where it ended with the.
So, so then he, he asked to speak to me, you know, as the mayor, so I said, fine, I'll, you know, speak to anyone that's fine. And he kind of reiterated what he said to Planning and Zoning, to Jack and I, and we just kind of listened and said, okay. And then we just had Mr. D'Onofrio, just maybe he could just, so we had him review all the documents, you know, historically, the lawsuit, right, the agreement, so.
I didn't look at the lawsuit. I looked at the deed and the declaration of covenant and restrictions, and it's clear that it's not personal to the declarant, it runs with the land.
Right.
Okay.
So, forever and ever.
Yep, right. So, anyway, that, so just, so that's where we stand, and, you know, and the agreement that we made, that you just mentioned, that runs with the land, seems pretty clear, I think, to everyone. So, you know, he has the right to develop that with what we have agreed to. So, and that seems to be the consensus of.
Yep.
Yeah, most of us, so. But just to keep you up to date on what, you know, what sometimes happens. So, we'll see. And, you know, he could still come in with a plan to Planning and Zoning and, you know, see what happens there, but that's how it, it's really. Yeah.
And Pistol Creek.
It was a Pistol Creek golf course, yeah. So, that's, that's where we, we are. So, you know, and so, again, Mr. Anderson, Mr. Benson were, you know, they were concerned as, you know, all of us are, to stick with the agreement and what we had agreed to years ago, the council, not us here, specifically, but the council. So, anyway, that brings up, do you guys have any other questions? Just, I just want to make sure everybody's on the same page of where we're at, so. Okay, appreciate it. Thanks, thanks, Mark, thanks, Jeff, Jack. Okay, so, we're at special committee reports. You're done, right? You said you were done with your?
I'm done.
Special committee reports, other than the, we had the ordinance committee. Obviously, we saw the results of the ordinance committee with the public hearings that we scheduled for next time. I don't think, right, there was no other special committees that met, right?
It was a board of ethics meeting.
Oh, okay.
And at this point, they're, they're reviewing the, the ethics policy. They've requested the town manager to obtain comments from each of the unions, and what their concerns are with the, with the ethics policy.
Okay.
So, that's where that stands.
Okay, great. All right, so, council communications. What do we, Sarah, understand anything?
Nothing tonight.
Good.
Nope.
Peter, you guys?
Good.
We're good? Okay, we'll close that. Acceptance, motion to accept our minutes.